Hello, how's it going?
When the company comes in December to an issue, you break up the curb. Who's responsible for your fair day? I don't know, they did something in the street, perhaps next to Anthony's. And the house is beautiful. And when they went to their patch job and asked for it to put it up where the curb used to be.
Okay.
And all garbage and like all broken up whatever it was.
It's usually the responsibility of the contractor to do the work, I would think.
But the water company did the work.
So it's the water company.
Okay, well, they really should probably fix that.
Yes, and I'll tell you, any concern is hard to get them to do a red job, they are relatively hard.
No, this really, it's really terrible and if it just blew the house, don't deserve that.
But what may be is, don't forget, when they do a repair, the first thing they do is a temporary patch. And then they'll come back like a couple of months later, they have a subsidiary called Cream Ridge that does the actual maintenance repair, so they make me back at a later date because they want to make sure there are no other problems with what they have been doing.
Yeah, because they had the street wall knocked out.
Yeah, yeah.
And they did the repair for sure, because they had to make them move everything, so it's not going to be right anymore. But you know, when I saw what was left at the end of the day, I really didn't know what else.
Like I said, the crews do the repair, not do the restoration, that's a second company. That's the, that's the utility, Cream Ridge is the utility branch of Feldman's Program.
Yes, I do that, too.
That's where Cream from, it's the same place.
I guess depending on where that has to be done, they may have to contact the local.
Yes, so we're just.
Do you know the repair necessary?
Usually, the utility capital of basketball blanket road over the cover, so they don't usually notify you.
Does that all, I'm sorry, does that mean that if you go? That's my fishing target. Get out on a lake.
They'll notify the company to repair, but it's not like they have to take out.
T.T.E. and Megan.
So they, they, they notify you.
They expect that they have.
They notify you.
Who's around, like, it's like.
But they don't have to come in.
Is Mary with his clips?
Yeah.
So they go jumping off the cliffs? When they're doing that, I just say that.
But.
Going some country.
You have that ability. The worst part is if they come in right after you do a road, that's the worst. We, that's why we send them the plans, and if they come in after it, then it's probably more important for emergency. If they come in after the long day road.
How are you, sir?
Very good, how are you, sir? And he did a follow-up. I would read a road program, they'll have to give me the refund, the big one.
Yeah, I already gave the estimates.
Yeah, the big, big.
Big ones, yeah.
Big.
Yeah.
I had a lot to choose from.
They have choices, I mean, it was, it's like, it's like three million, four hundred dollars.
I'm sorry.
How are you doing?
You can eat there.
Yeah, I do. I've been asking this a long time.
I don't have the list of mine, so I'll have to review it. I didn't know it was going to be on the agenda, I didn't know either. Yeah, I see that.
Do you sleep?
In my, I mean, he actually heard.
The other one was pink.
Yeah, I know.
Who used up.
A year ago, a bowling alley.
Okay.
He's here for readers, and it means a lot to the company, and that they are really trying.
Bowling alley, basketball court, usually very hard, thick hardened. We'll do some more. Put three cones on, of course, beautiful conditions to do.
Yeah. It's nice and dry.
But.
The bugs.
Yeah.
So, I was going to say. I definitely do.
It's very difficult.
I thought, yeah, I, I thought this break.
Senor. I have to talk to you. August the 23rd, Friday evening.
Yeah.
We're having Ruby up in the air, Ruby needs to sponsor by the town one.
Okay. Yeah, wait, yeah.
Do you put the tall ones around the gate?
No, we don't, we don't have tall ones. That was the Lions Club that did that. And I don't know where they got them. Might be the Board of Education, I don't even.
They say no.
They say no, yeah, the Lions, where would the Lions Club run? I'm sure they don't know. Yeah, no, we don't have any, we don't have.
Yeah, yeah, if you want to send an email, I can send an email to you.
Right.
Congratulations. Didn't you get married?
I'm sure of it.
Oh, I thought it was last week.
No, no, you know, originally, originally I wanted this Saturday, the weather announced suddenly first.
The meeting will please come forward, some kind of a statement through the most adequate, now seven meetings remains on our reserve cast by personal service on. July 10, 2013, transmitted to observe the record of the following news on July 10, 2013, in accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, P on 1975. Roco. Councilman De Pisa.
Here.
Councilwoman Buckman.
Here.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilwoman Lincoln. Councilman LaPerry.
Here.
Councilman Semenius.
Here.
Mayor Heck.
Here.
All rise, please.
Obedience with the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, Councilman LaPerry, in both.
Thank you, Your Honor. Prayer turn and open the meeting. Lord, as we gather today at this meeting, we ask that you will be humblest. Help us to make decisions that be pleasing to you. Help us to be able to discuss the matters at hand in a reasonable way, and to be willing to give up having power only. God, let this meeting be productive, and as should be the case in all areas of our lives. Help us to keep you at the forefront of our minds, as we do the work set before us, amen.
Number one, Governor signed the New Jersey Safe Act to assist victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. And second is a letter from Bergen County, saying that the applications were 2013. CED developments locked ramped once for handicapped accessible programs, has been approved for inclusion in the Bergen County 2013 Action Plan.
So move, Your Honor.
You want something?
No. Second.
I didn't ask for it.
You're jumping in.
You're all jumping in. May I have a motion to approve the communications as presented?
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The solid that claims in the council now to. Three million eight hundred ninety-four thousand nine hundred eighteen dollars fifty-five cents specified in the schedule here to am ex tap in the ten and approve of the fines commissioned or sepped. Where the chief financial officer has certified that funds are available in the council, and we declare. Now therefore being resolved if claims be paid and checks be issued on the funds in the council, it's paid under the tax schedule. May I have a motion to approve the bill?
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
Second.
Councilman De Pisa.
Yes.
Councilwoman Buckman.
Yes.
Councilman Gonzalez. Councilman LaPerry.
Yes.
Councilman Semenius.
Yes.
We have minutes. April 9, 2013 work session, April 9, 2013 executive session, April 23, 2013 executive session, July 9, 2013 regular meeting. July 23, 2013 regular meeting, July 23, 2013 executive session. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Second.
Roco. Councilman De Pisa.
Yes.
Councilwoman Buckman.
Yes.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman LaPerry.
Yes.
Councilman Semenius.
I abstain on July 23 because I wasn't there, yes on all lines.
Consent it, Senator. Number 147, here we go, 148 authorizing change order number one for furnishing indirect and welcome to Golden, at Woodland Park, 140. None authorizing approval of person-to-person liquor license transfer from Kinsu and Anne Marie, trading as reference liquors to Yoshi Liquors and Lines Incorporated, 152 licenses between these two states, 159 authorizing redemption access in 2009, that 0006 block 3121, six months, and now the 152 authorizing approval of 2013, 2014 licenses for commercial sale of certain money vehicle dealers. May I vote to approve this consent.
Please, Your Honor.
Second.
Second, Your Honor.
Roco. Councilman De Pisa.
Yes.
Councilwoman Buckman.
Yes.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman LaPerry.
Yes.
Councilman Semenius.
I have a problem with 148. This thing is going on and on. And I think it wasn't handled properly, I'm going to vote no on 148, yes on all.
We have a question for.
Yes.
Kaia Hamad, a Hasper Heights volunteer fire department junior fire fighter. May I motion to appoint Kaia Hamad as a Hasper Heights volunteer fire department junior fire fighter?
So move, what?
Second. Roco, please. Councilman De Pisa.
Yes.
Councilwoman Buckman.
Yes.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman LaPerry.
Yes.
Councilman Semenius.
Yes.
Michael J. Leone, as Hasper Heights Volunteer Fire Department Junior Fire Fighter, may I have Commissioner, Fire Commissioner Gonzalez as Deputy Fire Commissioner for those appointments? Councilman De Pisa.
Yes.
Councilwoman Buckman.
Yes.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman LaPerry.
Yes.
Councilman Semenius.
Yes.
Brendan Iorlani, who has for Heights Volunteer Fire Department Truck Company number one. We have Fire Commissioner Gonzalez, who Deputy Fire Commissioner, please state a motion for.
So move, please.
Second. Second, Your Honor. Roco, please. Councilman De Pisa.
Yes.
Councilwoman Buckman.
Yes.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman LaPerry.
Yes.
Councilman Semenius.
Yes.
Ronald Bieber Segwera, has a substitute crossing guard.
Motion to appoint.
May I have a motion of the commissioner?
Uh, yes. Uh, yes.
Roco, please. Councilman De Pisa.
Yes.
Councilwoman Buckman.
Yes.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman LaPerry.
Yes.
Councilman Semenius.
Yes.
Kerry Mallo, who has substitute crossing guard, Commissioner De Pisa, and Deputy Commissioner Gonzalez, please.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
Roco, please. Councilman De Pisa.
Yes.
Councilwoman Buckman.
Yes.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman LaPerry.
Yes.
Councilman Semenius.
Yes.
I'd like to take the time to welcome the junior fire fighters, the volunteers, and of course, the regular volunteer fire department member, Detroit Company number one. And welcome you to the fire department, and ask Commissioner and Deputy Commissioner to go down and welcome them. Fire Chief, would you come up and we take a photograph of these people?
Nope.
Move and tight, everybody.
Good job, you got it right.
I warned you, I warned you. I swear, birthdays coming soon, I'm getting in your camera lens, I promise.
No resignation, no agreement. Hearing. Ask for a motion and second to open the rest of these. So move.
Second, Your Honor.
Was that better?
Aye, aye.
Hold on any subject whatsoever.
Okay, so I have some control, five or six pounds. I'm the chairman of the Junior Friends of the Hasper Heights Library. And we're presenting this coming up on September 8 from noon to 12 at the Crow's Nest, our first annual fundraiser, which is the Grandparent's Day. In celebration of National Grandparents' Day, Junior Friends will be having their first fundraiser for the Junior Friends of the Hasper Heights Library. The program will be twenty-five dollars for tickets for a three-course meal for adults. And for children under twelve, it's eleven dollars. Applications are now available at the library. Proceeds for this will fund all Junior's programming for this year and next year. And we're hoping to bring out all of our grandparents, aunts, uncles, nieces, nephews. And try to make this a big family event right before the start of school year.
Wonderful.
Hope to see you all.
Congratulations to all that you do with friends and colleagues.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job, Justin.
I appreciate it.
I appreciate what you do.
Carol Siva, 191 year old, I just wanted to take this opportunity later to wish you a very happy baby birthday. Hope that you have a wonderful year.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? No one else. Hey, no one, I would ask for motion to close the Yamasian. Second. All those in favor? Let's go right into the votes. Ben? Wait, we have a communication. I have something from the Tepper Club.
I have a letter from the Hasper Heights Club, a Hasper Heights Place sign, in the town right of the way, at the entrance, among the staff of the Boulevard and the, and it comes out in the north.
Have they given us any idea of what kind of size the size? They didn't give us, meaning the size. Does that help us tell before we vote on it? Size and the size. Size, the height, the whole. There was more to me than. We bring it up in the next session. Is that okay with everybody? We really need more specifics. Unfinished business, Ken.
Boulevard, Streets Gate 1 and 2, there is one Cobra Lite left. I'm going to begin by the address that's in front of the, that where it's at. If it is not down by the next meeting, Public Service Electric will be here at the first meeting next month. So if it's not down, we'll have the opportunity to say, why not? Same with Faces 3 and 4, we're still waiting for PS to finish. That's the only items left, so we can do a new punch list on Phase 1 and 2, and the final punch list on Faces 3 and 4. Page, Faces. 5 and 6, we are expanding the plans for Phase 5 to include Phase 6. They should be going out for a utility review within the next week. And then we'll be going, once we get that back, we can go to bids, so you'll be through again two blocks with that. Along those lines, too, the state has announced that funding is now available for 2014 state aid. The deadline is September 20th, so governing body will have to think about it, and I would presume to another phase of the Streets Gate and put it in for one of the other streets in town and go from there.
Michael, are you doing that with?
Yep.
Ken, go handling that, make sure it gets in on time.
Yes. The state has also revamped the filing system for grants, it's called stage system. It's been reworked, supposedly it's better from the data versions we've used, it isn't, but we'll see what happens. As far as the Route 17 corridor, I'm sure you've noticed that the state has replaced the decorative fence with vinyl plaid chain link. I inspected it, I've got some issues with how that fence was installed, so I'm sending a letter to the mayor and council, and to vote, to DOT, to say, for one thing, there's no top rail on the fence, if you look at it, it already did this, but was called a tension wire, which is really not how you should do a fence. Actually, I'd like to see top and bottom rails. They also have not yet secured the gate, it was unlocked. These are the same people that wouldn't give you a key because they were afraid of you having access.
I think they hired a construction company to do the work for them. So, please send them that.
Yeah, they also, they did cut the vegetation off the old fence and cleared enough to get the new fence in. They did not do any work within the basin, except to take out one dead tree or two dead trees. The other thing is, they chewed up the walkway that they had put all around that, so that's going to also have to be repaired. Just not a professional job. And that. As far as the Boulevard, this program, program.
Also send a letter on behalf of the mayor and council with your permission to complain about it. And to say, we know that a construction, a construction company was to have been hired, and if they paid for this, it's a terrible job.
Mayor, I'd just like to ask a question to go down on record, the same, from an aesthetic point of view, we've gone down a couple of runs compared to the fence that we had. I realize that it's not your fault, or maybe in your purview at all, but I have to say that that chain link fence looks terrible. And, and they cut about two feet on the inside, you're right, just to cut up the posts and that fence, and, and the vegetation there looks like a swamp. And I am really shocked that they have done that without even asking us again. I just think that it's the ugliest thing I've seen. But I don't, I mean, they really went the cheap way out.
Well, here's, this, this, the reason for that is, just, just so you're aware of it. When the decorative fence was first proposed, the borough was told that the state would maintain spare sections of that fence at their maintenance yard, so that if it was damaged, it could be easily repaired. They never followed through on that, and did not have any spare sections of decorative fence. So it reached the point where if that fence was damaged by a vehicle, it was literally months before it could be repaired. So what the state did is came back and is using a standard chain link, so that if it's damaged, it can be replaced more readily. I agree with you, it's not as aesthetically pleasing. The, the, the thing is this, too, we were able to get them to at least use vinyl plaid chain link instead of just regular chain link that rots. But as I said, I will be sending a letter to the mayor and council saying how it was installed is not following the standard practice, and I think they need to come in and do it right. There's no reason, if you look at the fence posts that are down there, they were installed with the bracket for top rail. So it's not like they, they didn't know that this should be done, so we'll be doing that. But the only thing they did do correctly on this is, at the bottom of the fence, they did put a weed barrier. That's that great.
Rug, except the big rug.
Yeah, but again, it's not secure or anything, it's, it's not going to stay, but at least they did do that, but that was it, I mean, they.
Yeah, I don't know if you could make a recommendation in the letter from a structural point of view, but even brick pavers would be better than what they have there. If they, if they made nice looking brick pavers and, and funnelled it down to make it a like. A retention base.
Yeah.
With no, because you know, Mike, because nobody's going to take care of that in the future.
Nobody has yet. It's been a problem, that's what, takes a problem since it was first proposed. And it was pointed out before they put a shovel in the ground, it was going to be a maintenance nightmare. And it's there. I mean, we were, we were told, basically, or Hasper Heights was told, it's our right of way, we can do what we want. And that's what we did. And that's the same with the fence, it's their right of way to put whatever they like.
I think that they're, they really don't understand the quality of life, it affects the quality of life of everybody that puts down there, everybody that passes at our Franklin Avenue, our athletic field, every one of our events, it's a real eyesore. I just, I guess we.
I'm aware that we have sent letters, on top of letters, he has sent letters.
But they've traded.
I have contacted them, I made personal requests of him, in person, it doesn't matter to them. They don't care. Keep that in mind.
We were told.
It doesn't matter to, to the commissioner, the commissioner will do, well, you know, we'll do the best we can, that's, that's it. We even had them study the other side of the highway, if you recall, before they put in.
Yeah, and you showed them how they could put it on the other side without a problem.
They couldn't deal with.
And we were told, at the time, at, at best, it will be maintained once during the growth season. At best, they'll cut it once during season.
And they, they haven't touched it well over yet.
Can we do something from a legal point of view?
No.
If you are, if you're not, can't do anything?
We can investigate it, I'll talk.
We can investigate it, and I'll talk to Ken about, vax circumstances, it might give us a closer action.
Can we ask him if they at least know what state they're in?
Like, the state of this area. The one, what, the only thing that, because it's been a dry summer, one of the things you can argue is if it does.
For a summer?
As far as the basin, it has, you have not had to try.
We had a month there, that was.
That's correct, but it's, but, but again, if that becomes an area where it holds water and it starts to breed mosquitoes, then you can go after whoever it is. But that has not been an issue. And, and, and as I said, council, we check it, you know, monitor it, just to be sure what's going on there. And at least now the gate's not locked, I can get in and, and walk around it. But I mean, it's full of debris, man-made and vegetable. And what's gonna happen, again, this year is when it dies.
They don't clear, their, their highway in brief access and, you know, in person, in groups.
Yeah.
They don't clean anything.
No, I agree.
But it's frustrating, Justin, I know. And there are so many residents down there that have to be, you know, abused in this, because this is in, in a daily site. It's terrible. Thank you.
Okay, that's, that, we're still working with, to resolve some issues regarding the Boulevard curb ramp program. We are, as I said before, we're putting in fully compliant ramps as part of the State Day Streetscape. There are other areas to put ramps in, but there are legal issues going on down at the borough with ramps that were done previously, so we're not doing anything beyond the streetscapes at this time. Um, Little Park Pavilion, if anybody's ever down there, it's complete. Um, the Department of Public Works was able to get the electrical work completed. One of the things that was done was this, is after the pavilion was up, um, we had a meeting down there and it was felt that, based on the pavilion's roof line, the original design was for the concrete slab to extend two and a half feet outside of the roof. After the pavilion was up, it was felt that if the slab was extended, we could get better barrier-free access, especially to the rear where the serving area is, provide, um, a smooth transition to the west, that's where, where that timber wall was, and also extend it out and eliminate a step that was on the, on the other side, which was always an issue. So the contract was authorized, we extended the slab limits. What we also had to do, and he did this without charges, he regraded the area at the back where the, where the serving area is and the grills. So what we did is, we, we haunched it in cool so that when you're standing at the grill now to cook, the, the grill is at its normal height that it was. And we were able to haunch the concrete back so that you now do have a sloped access. We can't call it barrier-free because it's not intended for that. We were also able to extend the slab in the front and make a barrier-free walk. That's important, uh, because in between the time when you guys were given the grant and now, the county implemented that zero tolerance policy on barrier-free access. Well, with the way the old pavilion was and the building would have matched into it, that would have been considered, the, the area in the front of the pavilion where it connects with the existing wall, would have been considered a ramp. That means that you would have had to have protective warning surface and railings on both sides. By extending the slab out, we were able to make it nothing more than what's called, it is, it's a sloped sidewalk. It's got a minimal, minimal sided cross slope, so it's not considered a ramp. It meets ADA, it's fully compliant, but you don't get stuck with the additional cost and maintenance of having to ramp it now. If it wasn't for the zero tolerance policy, it wouldn't be an issue. But because this is being funded through a grant with the county, you have to comply with that. Even though it's after the fact, the county's applying it retroactively, so that was also addressed. So, again, it, it's solvable with that. Um, one of the things too, if, and I'm sure you remember, was the timeframe for the meeting. If you see that pavilion now, if you look at those columns, they are custom fabricated, three and a half feet higher than a normal column. That's one of the things that took the time. And if you look at the back where the chimney is, you can see how they had to cross brace that in order to get it in and put in two additional supports. That is the delight of the fabrication for it, but I think everybody will agree, the end bar.
I think the pavilion looks outstanding. I was amazed at the size of it, and it's really a beautiful space. It's gonna be well utilized by the community. And as Justin said before we came in here, the children are gonna be just ecstatic about it. Well, I said the families are gonna be happy about it. It, it gives us much more room, it, it's easier to utilize with that big step around, you know, we kept, everyone was there as they were moving around, it's just. And the lighting, the plumbing work is all done now, right, Billy?
Yes, your honor.
And the sink looks wonderful, no more hoses. Uh, the electrical outlets are all in, we have extra outlets now.
Yes, we do.
And, um, I just think, I haven't seen it lit yet, when I, I'm sure it's very impressive. And I, I like the light color undercover of, of the pavilion, really is beautiful. I'm gonna have to go see it lit, but I can't wait to see people utilizing it. And when I went down there, a day or so ago, I could see little strings, people had a party there, I remember. It must have happened.
The other thing too that was done, and that was against the DPW and, and Mike, is they sandblasted the chimney, so it's now down to its natural color.
It's true.
And it blends in very well with that pavilion. Um, that was one of the things too that they said had caused some deterioration even, is that it was painted on top, shouldn't have been years ago, but as I said, I mean, I think that does blend in. I mean, overall, it, it took longer than we would have liked, but it did turn out nicely in the end.
I love it, I love it. And I can't wait for everybody to see it in full use during town day. That's when it's gonna be at its best. We're lo, really love it.
Man, you gotta say something?
No.
I went down there, I was supposed to meet this gentleman over here, but something happened, I fell asleep. So when I went down there, I was wondering if fellows, they gave you a hard time as far as the extending of the contract, but after seeing the work and after seeing the table with a serving area, it was unbelievable. The only problem I had when I was there, I saw somebody shooting at me. It appears there's acorns on top of the tree. I kept on looking around, who's doing something? But I have to say, again, congratulations, everything turned out well.
Well, uh, but that was, actually, and that structure has sound deadening in it because of that tumbling roof, so you can, if you, one of the things that was talked about is just putting in a metal roof. And I had said, I'd rather sheath it, which, but also too with the sheathing, which is not one of the things too, that is tumbling roof sheathing, so it's, it's tight sheeting, it will not expand, contract. And what also that does is, it gives you the sound deadening and the lighter color, so again, it, the extra height and the light color makes the pavilion also look a lot more open, so.
Very good, very logic.
Um, as far as depth and field, the revised plans have been submitted to the borough and they also have to be reviewed by the board ahead. Um, that's based on the meeting we had out there with recreation and board ahead as far as the improvements, um, which includes a new entrance up on top of the hill to stop the water from going down the stairs whenever it rains and provide, again, a fully accessible handicap ramp. Also eliminating the problem with water from ravine avenue that keeps washing into the field and a new sixteen by sixteen foot old pavilion. So once we get the sign off, um, from board ahead in that we can go to bid and construction, the project is set up where it can be undertaken even when the field is in use. So we won't be delayed by, you know, football season, I doubt we can work with it. There's only one section of walkway, we can't do it, we'll do that after the season.
Mayor, just a minute.
Yes.
You said you gave us options?
Of what?
Of the depth and field?
Yeah.
Okay, your honor, we didn't.
We probably got the letter, the plans were.
The plans are due to be agreed, so we used to give them.
You can come to the office and see them, that's what they'll be able to give out.
Yes, we did.
Somebody going to the glass.
Coolidge Avenue, we are finishing up the plans, baiting up the trees again.
Yes.
We intend to bid it in September, start construction with a full, and finish construction in the spring. Um, we do wanna send it out to public.
We're not gonna do anything?
Oh, yeah, start construction with.
When you say, would, say what you mean by fold.
Before, during the two thousand twelve calendar year, uh, two thousand thirteen, sorry, calendar year. We intend to get the curb and sidewalk done.
Oh, okay.
And possibly the base pin, if that's what our.
Thank you very much.
And then, if, depending on weather, we'll most likely hold the, the top date of the calls for it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then.
By the way, I like the, the way the road was done down there at, at Woodland Park. You know, the new paving.
Oh, yeah, well, that's, that was part of.
The parking area and the.
That was done again.
Much nicer.
That was Bill Spindler's request and Mike's request, because we had some money left in the contract and.
It's such a blessing.
Yeah, it, it helps, again, because the cost.
It completes the entire picture down there.
Yeah, you're not gonna pave the entire road soon. This gave you at least the entrance and stuff to work with. Uh, it also actually worked out well with day camp and everything else, so, you know, it, it did, it did come.
Much nicer for the children.
We tried.
Yes.
Uh, and then Mike will talk about the two thousand thirteen road program.
Thanks. Back in, I believe, was March, can I give us estimates on probably fifteen roads that building?
Yes.
Which are then used, but can't go down and use them. It's a pretty excessive list and it's a pretty high price, it's probably in excess of one million eight. We normally put anywhere in two fifty, two hundred fifty thousand to four hundred thousand in our capital budget in this year. So as part of our two thousand thirteen capital budget, we said that our plan would be through the streets. I'd like authorization to put together a funding ordinance with Ralph for introduction at the second meeting in August, assuming we have enough time to get it done. And then as a subsequent, the governing body will have to direct us as to what street should be done, so maybe ordinance can place before we can do the rest of the guy. I'll work with Ralph on determining that.
Mayor, what figure would we put in, a million eight?
By hand?
No, 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 it's gonna be, I'm gonna look at the capital.
I'm sorry, I didn't know what you said.
I wanna know what the number we're looking at on streets, because he said a million eight, I said, we're looking at what.
A million eight was Ken's total estimate of all the roads.
So what's.
I'm gonna analyze each one and see if two hundred fifty thousand or three hundred thousand is the number. We'll add them all up and see how many we can squeeze in. If we can get an extra road by going to three hundred instead of two fifty, well, it's definitely worth doing. You don't wanna cut it off so you have twenty thousand left and sacrifice getting one whole road in, and you could put a little bit more money there. We'll get as many blocks as we can based on priorities.
Okay.
That's, you asked me about that noise?
Yeah.
That's the CD spinning on Rose. I believe it, right?
And hopefully it's recorded.
Yeah, it's coming from the soft. Yeah, it's a CD, it's a CD.
Thank you. Let's hear it.
We'll add that to the road orders.
Okay.
Now, a million eight.
Fire or on four?
The next item, if I could, is that, the acquisition of a street sweeper. I've tweeted to Bill and Councilman Gonzalez on this. This also was approved as part of our capital budget. That and then the acquisition, I believe, of a duck slide. The street sweeper is estimated to cost somewhere around a hundred and seventy-nine to a hundred eighty thousand dollars. I have some sample specs. Over the next week or two, I'll be meeting with Bill and Dave, if need be, and we'll try to put together funding ordinance on that also. Once our budget was introduced and adopted, and then we'll shed it to the year and we start moving through the programs, for every capital project that's in your capital budget, that is, for lack of a better description, kind of a wish list. These are the things we wanted to. You can't do them until you do a corresponding capital ordinance. That gives you the spending authority. So that's what we're up to now. So I would anticipate in, at the next meeting, the road program and hopefully the street sweeper ordinance, uh, will be two separate ordinance, which would require Ralph to put together, and I would do a death statement file.
Mayor, how old is the street sweeper?
Fifteen.
It's nineteen ninety-nine curtains that we're using, so it's fourteen years.
And I, Mayor, I just also had, we also looked into finding a company that would either.